To the first meeting of January 2022. And we will hop right into the agenda. We have current claims, minutes payroll. And for the first first meeting, we have been given plenty of extra paperwork to sign. They really, they really want to make sure we do some work today, Mike. With regard to preapprovals, I believe, Jim, you said we had nineteen preapprovals?
I got it nineteen on there, yes.
All right, and those will consist of claims preapproved on twelve twenty-two, Star Card in the amount of ninety-six dollars, Rab Water, the amount of nineteen dollars fifty cents, Mike Anderson in the amount of five hundred ninety-four dollars seventeen cents, Star Cards in the amount of two thousand four hundred twenty dollars sixty-eight cents, Staples in the amount of one hundred four dollars eighty-five cents, Wright House in the amount of one thousand three hundred dollars two cents, AT&amp;T in the amount of forty dollars thirty-one cents, AT&amp;T in the amount of seventy-seven dollars and seventy cents, AT&amp;T in the amount of eighty-eight dollars thirteen cents, and Gas City Utilities in the amount of three hundred thirty-five dollars seventy-eight cents. We also had preapproval claims on twelve of twenty-eighth, the twenty-eighth of December, including Rex Collins in the amount of three thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars, Charter Communications in the amount of sixty-six dollars forty-five cents, United Consulting in the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars eighty-two cents, Star Card in the amount of eighty-six dollars eighty cents, Irving Materials in the amount of five hundred eighty-nine dollars forty-seven cents, Gas City Utilities, nine hundred twenty-five dollars fifty-three cents. Also, under preapprovals, we had the claims from December twenty-ninth. And the first one would be Capital One in the amount of two hundred one dollars ninety-two cents, Clarence Faulkner Community Center in the amount of seven hundred seventy-five dollars, and Verizon Wireless in the amount of one hundred forty-eight dollars sixty-six cents. These were all preapproved. And Mr. McWark, if my memory serves us correct, that would then wipe out all the rest of the claims from last year. Is that correct?
That'd be my responsibility. It's be yes. That's my understanding.
All right, so we have those preapprovals. We would need a motion to ratify the preapprovals as presented. Motion, Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Maury. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. With regard to our January three invoice edit reports, we have two of the three batches. General batch in the amount of three hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Other batch, sixteen thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars seventy-four cents. No edit reports for Highway, so the grand total on those two requests would be three hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Would need a motion to approve expenditures. Motion, Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Maury. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. Dave, wait and not spend any money, or at least a two-week period. All right, we also have formal approval of payroll number twenty-six. That preapproval was given on the twentieth of December in the amount of five hundred eight thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars ten cents. That's the gross, and that was paid out on the twenty-second of December. Would need a motion to ratify the preapproval for payroll twenty-six. And a motion, Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Maury. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. We'll take a look at paperwork here for just a moment and see where we are in signing. I think I've got those now. Need you to sign these as well, Mike. All right, that should cover us on the claims and payroll. We are up to date. We do. Did we have any minutes that were already?
About this time around.
We didn't have any that we've done any editing on, so we're good there. We do have a list of updated reports from Waits and Measures. That would be a report September to October fifteenth, October to November fifteenth, and November to December fifteenth from Waits and Measures. If you gentlemen have seen those in your packets, we just need to receive those. Motion or consent, whichever you prefer. Motion to accept, Mr. Maury, second, Mr. Burton. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those are accepted. IT report, and Marcus is in the room.
Not today.
It is the first of January, first meeting, and you're not asking for money? Another plus tick for you today. Thank you, sir. Dave is in the room, but he's, he's not promising anything, is he?
I'm not going to start out and ask him for money.
That's good.
First thing today, I'm going to open up these stone and fuel bids. First company, I believe, is a fuel bid.
I'm sorry, Dave, which bids were those again?
This one here is fuel. First company to open up fuel bids is Dawson Oil Incorporated here in Marion, Indiana. Gasoline regular is two sixty-five. Number one, or I'm sorry, on-road diesel is two dollars and ninety cents. I'd like to take this in review. And Mike, what we have always done in the past is when we need fuel, we call and see what the price is that day. I had one other company that contacted me and said they were not going to put a bid in this year. Petroleum traders out of Fort Wayne said they were not going to participate this year, so. And then the next bid I have is from IMI for stone and gravel. And I'll just give you some common fifty-three and seventy-three stones, twelve thirty-five a ton. And number eleven stone, which we use mainly for our chip silk program, is fourteen forty-five a ton. So same thing, if I could take this, review it, and report back next meeting on who we'd like to recommend. That's all right.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Couple other things, we did go out yesterday morning, put a little salt and sand down on some of the intersections. Some roads were slick, some weren't, so just to kind of test run and make sure everything is going to work all right. So we got some things we need to work on, but that's why we kind of did it yesterday.
Did you find a lot of ice on the roads?
Certain roads, some were completely dry, some were standing in water, and some were, like you said, a sheet of ice. So it just kind of depend on what area. And it really didn't matter what part of the county. Over in Mear, it was pretty much all covered with snow. So it was just weird how it affected different roads, so.
Indiana weather, because it was slick and hazardous with ice here in Marion, and I drove to Van Buren and it was dry.
Right, yeah, I was going to say, so I pretty much just sent everybody off just to check everything, so. Just update you on a few things, we started on another house project with the area plan today in Jonesville, so we're going to get another house down for the area plan on that. Still have January, next meeting, the eighteenth, for the bid opening on Bridge Thirty-Nine on County Road One Thousand East. So hopefully we'll get a couple, we've had a couple construction companies come in and get plans and everything, so we should have at least two bids that I know of, so. And then a couple other things, we did get out and looked at Mr. Dunn's project out on River Road. And also, and I apologize, I don't know if the gentleman's last name is Willie or his first name is Willie that worked for the sheriff's department. So we did go look at a couple of them. Mark, I don't know, did Jim or you go ahead and email that, pictures and stuff I sent to Mr., to you, to Mr. Dunn?
I think Jim was going to forward it, but I haven't confirmed that since I sent it to him last week, so.
I was going to say, like I said after our meeting, I went out and looked at it. Basically, what update you gentlemen on is, I think we can change that tile and just keep it on the right-of-way and not even go on his property. So basically, where it turns, we'll go clear past his driveway for his field entrance and everything, and never really affect his fields, is what I'd like to propose.
So water would be on the north side of his, his entrance?
Yes, basically just charge down there in that wooded area that's on his property, but it goes to a creek. So that's what I'd like to try to do that. We looked at Willie's project. And I do have some pictures on my phone. I don't know what you guys, that's kind of a messed up situation out there. Basically, what they did was they moved a tile when they installed a pond. And where they put it is right in the middle of a bunch of trees. And I don't know, it's way off the right-of-way. The tile missed through all these trees here, so I don't really know.
I remember that you can show Ron.
I would say I really don't know, that's where his tile comes up. Basically, in here, it drains, and this goes out, and there's a pond out here. So what they did was they turned that tile and missed that pond.
And is that a mutual drain, or is that a private drain?
I believe it's a private drain that was installed, like I said, when they installed that pond. And I, I'll be honest with you, I really don't know what we can do as a county. I mean, like I said, it's more of a private tile that's going across that gentleman's field. And it basically outlets over on County Road Three Fifty East, just north of where the school used to be.
You have the New Horizons complex, yeah.
So that's where it outlets, I mean, I really don't know, I mean, I guess I could try to find out who owns that field and see if they had a problem if we tried to do anything. But the bad thing about it, I think being right on top of them trees is the only thing really to do is to remove it and put new plastic pipe in that don't have holes in it, so roots don't get in there and slow it all down, so. Whatever you gentlemen would like me to do, I'll be glad to.
I think probably we ought to ask if we can run that, that tile to, I want to say to the west, goes to west.
Right, yes.
And then keep Willie updated on where we are.
Okay, I can do that. I think maybe he said in the past he had Chuck pulling install some tile. I don't think that's really the problem. I think the problem is where Chuck stopped this tile is, from there on is the problem. I don't think that's, that's the main problem, is it can't get rid of the water, so.
So just, just for, I'm, I'm trying to think of it in terms of drainage. What Chuck did, did that connect with the tile that was already there?
He didn't connect it, he like outletted. So it's like his is here, and then this one that goes around that pond is over here. They're not hooked together, but they're real close.
There's an outlet and an intake.
Right, and that's why I said the one that goes, like you said, to the northwest is the problem, I think, so. I'll do some more checking and update you some more. Other than that, that's all I have today.
Well, you did keep the snow drifts off the road this past weekend, thank you.
Yes.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
I failed to do the communication and board updates, I apologize, because I had already mentioned Ron. While I was, I'm sitting on the Governor's Commission on Public Health in our debates this past month, we learned, how much the rest of the state knows about this, I don't know, but we learned that there is a formula for how many public health nurses should be available in each county. And according to that formula, well, let's go this way. He's not in the room, but we have one point five public health nurses right now. We have a full-time and a part-time. According to the current formula, there are supposed to be public health nurses, one for every five thousand residents in a county. So that puts us up at, what, eleven, twelve, thirteen public health nurses that at least had been recommended. And so we are at a disadvantage almost all these counties in the state of Indiana. Anything less than probably a population of a hundred thousand has a deficit in their, their health program. And so that's part, part of what we're learning. And so this commission is going to be taking this information to the legislature as well as the governor and saying, we need to fix this or redo some formulas. But we are dramatically lower than where we should be when it comes to public health nurses right now. And with that good news, I'll, I'll go over, Mr. Autor, do you have any updates for us?
I believe I have nothing new to report today.
All righty.
I'll give my time to someone else.
Mr. Jackson, want to come tell us about the snow we're going to have on Thursday?
Well, speaking of public health, I can't help you with the nurse situation, but. So reported this morning, we did have an EOC briefing this morning with the county schools, hospital, health department, and those affecting agencies. They did report a hundred ninety-nine cases over the weekend, positive cases of COVID, eleven today. So the last couple days, numbers have been down. We'll see in the next couple days, sometimes that, that takes a couple days to pick up the, the numbers that were actually done on the weekend, or people didn't go just because it was the weekend, that again was open, so. We'll look for that, but honestly, Grant County has not done very bad in regard to how maybe the rest of the state and the rest of the nation has fared the last couple of weeks. So that's encouraging. However, the hospital is still reporting they are very busy. They are struggling to find beds for everybody. They've had some reported flu cases. So just finding beds for anybody in the hospital, in any hospital in Indianapolis, Indiana, is a, is a problem, I think, honestly. That is a concern for us. We know that our EMS folks have been busy over the holiday weekend, they have been very busy. Saturday was tremendous push for them, so we're just keeping an eye on all that. There again, just want to encourage everybody that has not been vaccinated, you still have time. That would certainly help take the, some of the load off the hospital. Because the bulk of their COVID patients are non-vaccinated, you know that. Long-term care facilities reporting very well. So there again, that, that's a testament right there to the vaccines. Those, those folks are, are almost a hundred percent vaccinated, and very few cases in our long-term care facilities, so. Good job by them. Schools just starting back, so we'll see how that does next week, but they didn't report a lot of cases today, so. That's where we are with that. Snow, that's a tough one. They are predicting no showers the rest of the week, so I'm going to run with that. I hold Mr. McWark responsible for that.
I didn't know that was in my realm of scope of possible, is there?
Everything's on the table. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the EMS director?
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other directors on the line, and Ryan's going to talk to us here in a few moments. So any other special committees or boards that need to report? All right, hearing none, we will go to old business. And under that, we have the consideration of twenty twenty-two health board appointments. We tabled that for further discussion. And we have the names of Brandy Swanner and Barbara Urkey that have come before us. I don't know how you want, a gentleman want to hold, conduct this. I don't think we had any question among the three of us that we were happy to reappoint Brandy. Is that, is that true?
Yes.
So it would be appropriate to have a motion to reappoint Brandy Swanner. Appointment date, January first of twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
I would move to reappoint Brandy Swanner to health, but I'll second that.
Have a motion, Mr. Maury, to reappoint for the duration of January twenty-two to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Burton, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. All right, with regard to the other recommendation, Barbara Urkey also has, term has expired, and the recommendation was that she be reappointed from the January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And last meeting, Mr. Maury wanted to discuss that a little bit further. And we can discuss either prior to a motion or after a motion, so however you gentlemen want to do that.
I'm prepared to make my comments and recommendations. I, I have a concern, a couple of concerns. Number one, in the original appointment of Barbara Urkey four years ago, she gave the commissioners an ultimatum, that either we were to appoint her, reappoint her, or we were to get rid of Dr. Kennedy, or she would not serve. I didn't like that ultimatum. Secondly, I had several situations where an employee that helped go on filed formal complaints against me through Jefferson. And I asked her to investigate that, she did not. There's never anybody held accountable for those actions against me personally. Now, they were serious enough that when the complaint was filed with Justin, I was alleged to have done some things that, I have a tape recording that refutes that completely, did not happen. So I had asked her at that time to investigate it, take action on it. There was never any investigation nor action taken on it. And I just, I have a real serious reservation with Barbara Urkey based on that, those recommendations and situation.
All right. Thoughts, comments, Mike?
I haven't, personally, I haven't had any issues with Barbara Urkey. So I'm aware of the situations.
Well, my, my interactions with Barb have been both positive and negative, simply because we're discussing and debating medical issues from time to time. And just as Brandy has brought a unique set of skills to the health board, I see Barbara Urkey bringing a unique set of skills with her teaching and nursing degrees. And so I'm, I'm of an opinion that I could vote positive for, for Barbara, it's just a matter of whether we make a motion and move it forward or not.
I would also share that when we dealt with the smoking or non-smoking ordinance, Commissioner Bardley sent a recommendation and a request to the health board to look at some other alternatives to the no-smoking ordinance. And in a public meeting, she stated, if the commissioners don't want to listen to us on the smoking, I don't know why we want to talk to them about this. I, I just think that's a wrong attitude to have for somebody that should be in the same wavelength or communication process that we are. And so I would, I would just, I would oppose that reappointment. Personally, I could support it, I haven't had any issues at this point. Or if you decide to go with somebody else, that's fine with me as well.
Well, we have the option. I can make the motion, it can be or not be seconded, and we vote. Or you can make the motion, and it just depends, because I, I think we know how Ron wants to vote. So.
It doesn't matter.
Well, we'll put it out, see where it goes. I would move to approve the reappointment of Barb Urkey for the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five seat.
And all of the second thing.
Now we can discuss it, there is a motion with support. Any other compelling thoughts that we want to add? All right.
I, I just want to say I'd be heavily, I'd be heavily objective against.
Mr. Maury has made his, his point. We have a motion with support. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those saying negative, carried it two to one. So we will reappoint Barbara Urkey on the health. All right. We have the solar ordinance update, Ryan is in the room with us. Are these just notes, Ryan?
Yeah, I, I sent these out to everyone. I just made, obviously, made sure that you guys have them.
You did it last week, I was on vacation, so I.
Yeah, I did, it was. So for the solar ordinance, obviously, we, we kind of started with the committee back in July and worked through the ordinance, put together four separate drafts of the ordinance to the commissioner's summit meeting in October. At that point, we turned it over to the APC to finish completing it and to put forth a recommendation back to the commissioners for the adoption of the ordinance. So that's kind of the timeline. Area Plan Commission has had two meetings, we'll have another meeting tonight. We've had two workshops. And those workshops have basically been three-plus hours both. And they've, they've kind of been a one-sided discussion or debate. So kind of what you have in, in front of you right now is the big issues that we're talking about are setbacks, order of approval, property value guarantees, wording in the decommissioning plan, and guarantees for non-slave labor and equipment manufacturing location and producing plants. So that's, that's kind of what's being proposed to put into the ordinance. We are still not to a point, hopefully through tonight's meeting, we'll be able to discuss enough to get it to a public hearing. But at this point, we, there is no public hearing scheduled.
You have noted, I did catch the email, that the state is looking at bringing back the solar and wind ordinance or statutes. the solar and wind ordinance or statutes that, again, if we do not have something in place, will be much more lax than what we are talking about.
Yes, and I, I tried to add, add that into some of this to take for an example the setback. We had originally proposed 250-foot between solar equipment and dwellings. Indiana's proposal from this previous year, HB 1381, they had recommended it or put it at 150. When we take, we went through and, and we averaged out 32 counties, their setbacks averaged at 228 feet. So I think we, we thought going, bringing it to the APC, the 250 was on the high side to begin with. Our current recommendation from the APC is, is 1,320, which would match the largest setback in the state.
Have you heard from any of the developers what that type of footage would do?
We have, we've been told in both workshops that effectively at 1,000 feet, we are, we are effectively putting a moratorium on solar. If you, if you look at the back of those packets, I've actually taken on GIS and put some aerials together to kind of give an idea. The picture on top, that is a 40-acre farm. The lines indicate a 1320 setback on a 40-acre farm, as an example. The picture below is pretty much country mile with setbacks from the houses. As you can see there with, with the number of houses in that square mile, it reduces the developmental plan by over 50%. It takes it down from 638 acres reduced down to 300 acres. So it, it makes it a, a challenge, that type of setback makes it a real challenge for developers to come in. The developers were concerned, again, when we get on setbacks, if we've only got 308 acres here, it is a 1,000-acre field, then what we run into is largely the setback to more people that's involved that gives impact by, by putting that type of setback together, we end up with a checkerboard trying to meet that solar project's needs. So we, we end up affecting three, four times as much as people. Again, this is only one of them, and there's, there's, you know, we could line 50 people up and tell you how wrong I am. I, what I try to do is just, here's the information.
You have presented the facts over the last month quite admirably. We appreciate you, you getting facts out, and I guess one of the things I, we need to know, are, are you asking for any type of statement from us on this today, or are you just trying to bring us up to speed?
I, I know when we, when we had originally sent this forward to the Area Plan Commission, the thought process following the Commissioner's Summit Meeting was that this ordinance was about 90% completed with a few loose ends to tie up. We, we have went from there and created one of the, in my opinion, most restrictive ordinances in the state. My hope is to somehow keep this in the middle so that it works for Grand County, it works for the residents, it works for everyone. We are not there right now. We will probably talk tonight, come up with another workshop for this month to go another three hours, and I'm, my concern is we are putting stuff together that you guys may never pass. So with the current recommendations, I'm going to have to rewrite about half of the solar ordinance to get it approved into a public hearing, to bring it back here, to hand it to you guys, where you guys may or may not approve it. If you don't, then I've got to take it back, I've got to take your modifications back to the Area Plan Commission, let them look at it again and put it forward to you again, for you to make modifications and pass or not pass, and then when you're done, I've got to take it to all the towns within our incorporated area. My concern becomes, if the state does put forth another ordinance, and it does get adopted, if we do not have an ordinance in place, we have to follow the state. If only half of our county has an ordinance in place, and we could very well have two separate solar ordinances in Grand County, with one, you know, the state is a bare minimum. So, I mean, we could have two really drastic, separate solar ordinances. So, again, I'm, this is stuff, we'll discuss tonight, stuff that I've been sending out. You know, my, my concern is we're running around in June trying to get the towns to adopt a solar ordinance that they might, might not have had a great chance to order.
Well, we'll be waiting with some anticipation on what you hear next. As I understand it, you, you kind of explained one way. The way we, we've done it both ways, but the way you propose is Area Plan sending us a recommendation, we strike, we rewrite, we propose, and send it back to them. Once that happens, then they would act and bring it back to us again, as that.
Right.
In the past, there have been times where we have actually written something, sent to them for review, and then they send it back and we act. Do you have a preference?
Whatever works for everyone. That's, I, I, you know, again, I'm, I'm fighting, fighting really hard to keep this thing in the middle somewhere. I think the ordinance that we proposed is actually a little bit more stringent than 32 other ordinances out there.
Yeah.
And we've kind of taken that.
We, we, we just need to have the entire community understand that if we do not act in some form or fashion, by default, the state will tell us what we're going to do.
Right.
And we've always tried to refrain from doing that. We wanted, we wanted to have some autonomy and some, some grassroots leadership, but at the same time, if, if we go to the extreme and, and if we essentially put a moratorium by placing, you know, 1,000-plus feet on, on setbacks, I think, again, we put ourselves in jeopardy, because that'll be tried, tested, I'm sure, in court, and then the default goes back to the state requirements again. So we, we have to work together.
And again, as these are, as these have come out, you know, 1320, the example that, or the ordinance that it was pulled from is out of Adams County. I talked to Adams County directly. Since their ordinances went in place, they have had zero solar development at 1320. We talked about approval processes and the process that we're proposing. I talked to Franklin County, who was the only other county in the state that has that approval process. They've had that ordinance in place for seven years. Since the adoption of that ordinance, they've had zero solar development in that county. So that is my concern, that we are, that we are possibly slamming the door, but again, this is, puts me in a situation that my immediate authority is the APC, which you are their immediate authority. So I'm kind of stuck in the middle, so.
And, and again, to muddy the waters even more, we already have four solar farms in the county, and if there, there are others that are ready to strike even before this, this is, is put into some type of ordinance, and there may be two or more new farms simply going through the, the process that is by default what we've done in the past, we've got to have some more regulation, and again, we have to push that issue.
And we, we know Delaware County just, just approved two additional solar farms. J County just approved two additional solar farms. Madison County is out of Supreme Court that won that case, that solar farm is moving forward. Howard County has one, and, I mean, there, it's not like we're the first.
Correct.
So right now, there are several solar developments out there. We've got several interested parties in Grand County. But again, you know, I, I think out of this is kind of what we need is, is guidelines.
Is there any way, can you get a good sense what the people of this county want it to be?
We, we currently are getting 50 to 60 people at our workshops, but it is pretty much one-sided.
It's pretty much one-sided, you said?
One-sided. So it's, it's, we, we want, you know, I say most restrictive, they would say most thorough.
They'd say most what?
Most thorough. So it's a tomato, tomato.
And ultimately, we have to wrestle with not only the rights of those around these farms, but the rights of the landowners that want to use their properties for that purpose. And so. Same arts we had when we had the windmill situation going on, it's the same type of thing.
And I, you know, with, with these ordinances, Chuck Brady, our, our president, has done a great job trying to keep us moving forward. And one of the things that I, that I really try to, to push is when it comes down to these developments, it's going, it's going to be a, a case-by-case basis, it's going to be a location basis, and it's going to depend on the development. And a lot of this falls back to fear versus fact, a lot of mights, maybes, and goods, which is why I, I keep trying to do the research, do the review, talk to people, and get information out there. You know, there's, there's a lot of stuff, and one of the questions that came up is, you know, what if, what if one of these solar farms surrounds a house? And I bring up the point, if, if we have a situation to where a solar farm is going to surround a home, that's on us. That's part of development, that's part of review. If that happens, we allow it. So again, I fall back to the case-by-case location and development of each project.
You, you're not getting farmers, you're not getting individuals say, hey, we want this to happen.
We, we know there's several out there.
But they aren't coming forward to talk about it?
Side puppet hearing. They, I have been told that they do not want to go through meeting after meeting of kind of what we've been, and it is available, Grand County Government on YouTube, you can watch the workshops, that, you know, they don't want to go through meeting after meeting.
Can you tell, are there a lot watching it that aren't participating? Can you tell them what you do there?
The numbers on there, I mean, they're not thousands, but there's, you know, 30, 40, 50, 60 that, that have watched the meetings. Like I said, there, I think the first one was three hours and 12 minutes, and the last one was three hours and 43 minutes.
I know, I recall on, on the windmill situation, no one came forward against until it was almost the last minute.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure, you know, you're getting kind of the opposite there a little bit, I guess.
Yeah, well, we had, I mean, through the Commissioner's Summit Meeting, we were moving, moving forward at a pretty good clip. It wasn't until we got to the, the workshop in November that we started getting negative response.
It's probably better to get it early on and late because of the situation you're dealing with, so. They're never easy decisions.
Right.
How does that, how does that affect, like, I live in, in addition, in Sweets, we have a homeowners association, going to affect that in the same manner? I mean, whatever this ordinance does, it'll address those as well, or?
Well, I mean, incorporated areas, you may have Sweets Elementary that, that wants to put in a small solar farm like Oak Hill, Madison, Grant. So, you know, right now, we, we've got the four that went in, we've got the Oak Hill, Madison, Grant, we've also got AEP and the one over outside of Gas City. Those both went through the BCA and got approval, but we have zero regulations on them. So there's no decommissioning plan, there's no road agreements, there's no liability. If they got up and walked away tomorrow.
How about an individual that wants to do something on their, on their own home?
On, on residential solar, we've had a record here for residential solar, but most of that, your residential solar falls back into the Indiana Building Code. So most of that is already regulated by the Building Code, and most of our setbacks are to the zoning ordinance, like for accessory structures. So those, those setbacks are, are done by, are already ordinance in place. So I mean, there, there's a lot of information out there. I urge everyone to, to watch the YouTube videos, to see what's out there, to, to get in there.
Any other questions for Ryan on solar right now?
No question, but I wanted to commend you for your hard work. It's pretty obvious that you put a lot of thought and time and patience in this. I appreciate it.
Yes, that's definitely.
We will be waiting and continuing to work with you in the background as you bring us stuff from Area Plan.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, are you aware of other old business that we missed? All right, we'll move to new business. We have Brad Driver with Amaraesco talking to us about the courthouse repair proposal.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Brad Driver, and I'm the senior project developer for Amaraesco. I believe before you, you guys should have our amendment to our last Phase 3 project, and this, this is for the storm water management and moisture intrusion upgrades over at the courthouse. Amaraesco was asked about a year ago to investigate moisture intrusion in the southeast, southeast corner of the, I guess they call that the ground floor of, of.
It's technically the basement, yeah.
Okay. And, and so what, what we investigated at that time, we started doing some investigation, I started doing some investigation, and, you know, we, we took samples inside thinking that, you know, there were some concerns of, of mold. It, it turned out not to be mold, but, but it was just moisture that was getting into the, the interior walls of the basement around the perimeter of the courthouse. In January, February, I did some extensive research up, up there, looking at plans, looking, you know, trying to investigate what, what this is. We waited for some warmer weather. We eventually this summer actually did a, a dig on the, on the southeast, an exploratory dig on the southeast corner, tried to understand what's going on with the foundation down there. At that time, we uncovered flagstone, which was similar to the Corrections Facility Foundation that we did in our last phase with you guys. And so then we brought in a structural engineer to kind of assess the situation, got their report back with recommendations on, on how we could alleviate the, the moisture intrusion into the courthouse. And, and with that, it, it appears that, and we kind of laid that out here on page five of our scope, is that to go back in and waterproof exterior courthouse foundation, we would have to excavate around, around the perimeter, clean that flagstone material on the foundation again, and basically build a one-sided wall that would be secured to that, to that flagstone, similar to what we did over here at the Corrections Facility. We would line that, again, with, with some wool clay, waterproofing material, same thing that we used over here. We would install a, a footer drain, and then a little bit of needing to be able, because of the elevation and working with Marion City Utilities of trying to get that moisture away from the courthouse. We're going to have to install some, some drainage tile around, around the courthouse, and on page six, there's, there's a small version, I apologize for the, the picture being so small on that page, but it kind of shows what we would intend to do, and working with City Utilities, we, we've shot elevations and, and did some topo work, and what we would do is, even though we just put the footer drains in, we've got to get the moisture away, your existing storm drains are on each corner of the, of the courthouse right now, so those are storm drains that are draining the roof of, of all the moisture, and those currently go underground and out to the sidewalks, out to the street. And, and per the city, they say that that has caused some, some buildup down on the southwest corner and also on the northwest corner, as that water kind of collects down there, and then it kind of floods that area until it makes its way around to the inlets that are out there on the street. So working with them, we would be able to take the, the storm drains from each corner of, of the building, we would also be able to take the moisture away from the, from the foundation, from the footer drains, we would also address the, the moisture, the, the rainfall. the rainfall that's coming off, the stormwater that's coming off of your awnings, as people enter from the east and west side into the courthouse, those awnings that were created several years ago, as that water comes off right now, it's dumping right into the southeast corner, actually to the judge's chambers area, it just kind of, it just kind of collects there. And so we'll be able to, to take that away as well, and get that away from the, from the foundation of the building. And then the sidewalks that were installed several years ago around there, the, the swell is, is back towards the foundation of the courthouse right now, and so we'll create area drainage between the sidewalks and the courthouse, where we'll be able to take that area drainage into these new, into these new storm piping that we're proposing. And all that will go to the north, and then it will go to the east, and working again with the city utilities on what was the best plan, is that they've allocated us a, a, an existing, an existing storm drain that's on the east side of, of Adams Street, and we'll enlarge that, and we'll be able to bring all that stormwater over there, then that will collect, and I'm assuming all that goes down to the river then, so. And then, so that's kind of the exterior of us taking care of the exterior, but we need to address the interior right now, which is that southeast corner, which is the worst out of, out of all, right? And so then what we're proposing on page five as well is to address the interior part, to where we will, we will scrape all that plaster that's damaged, and we will redo the entire plaster area about five feet to six feet from above grade on the interior of the building. And we'll have to remove some fan coil units as we're, that's the heating and air conditioning system, we'll have to remove those temporarily, so if we can do it properly behind the wall and get all this plaster work taken care of. There's some electrical raceways down along your baseboards, we'll, we'll remove those up on a temporary measure, so that way we can do all the plastering properly. And then everything will be repainted, once, once that interior fan coils we put back on, the electrical raceways will be put back on, and then we'll, we'll repaint per color of choice in the judge's chambers, in, in the courtroom, and in his staff's office as well. So those would be the three office areas that we would address.
And that, this would alleviate the complaint that we've been having from Judge, Chris Hughes.
The claim.
Yeah.
I forgot.
So that'll take care of that problem.
That, that is correct, yeah. This has been an ongoing problem that, that, that you guys have had over there for several years. When we did our exploratory dig, we found evidence that there had been at some point in time a, an attempt to try to do something around the perimeter of the courthouse, and obviously with the material, the material was not really made for that, that, that was put in, and that, that came back in our engineering report from, from the structural engineer. They took samples of what that material was and identified it, and then that, that was in their report as well then, so. So, yeah, so it's, it's obviously been attempted once before, and not done properly, similar to maybe what was done over here at the corrections building at one time, it was attempted but not completed all the way, and we still have those problems.
I think, Brad, you also explained to me that while it is quite visible in our southeast corner, there is actually deterioration in our west wall as well. What we've done, though, is in, in some of the remodeling, we actually furred it out and then put stuff up, so we still have some of that, that bubbling and, and problem going on on the west side, it's just not visible right now, they, they didn't find that.
Yes, yeah, thanks for bringing that back up, yeah. So, in the north, northwest, I think, I believe that's your, that your voting offices up, up there, there's paneling, and so we, we were able to get, look behind that paneling area and, and get, get an idea about what's going on. And then in the south, what I would call the southwest, and I believe that's the clerk's office area, I think, I think that's.
Southwest.
Across from the.
Yes, that's.
Across from the, the.
Juvenile detention, or the juvenile court.
Yeah, the juvenile court, right. I, I believe that, and then at one point in time, they actually had their offices remodeled, and they actually furred out with drywall. And then that goes about six inches above the, the, the lay-in ceiling that they had put in there, so that goes up there. So we were able to kind of, again, getting behind the HVAC equipment, we're able to kind of peek behind there, kind of see what's, what's going on with that. There were some other areas that we were able to, you know, to, to see what's happening behind there, but. So what we would say is, is that eventually those interiors would probably need to be addressed on a case by case situation. At this point in time, we have not included anything in our proposal to take care of those other areas, except for the three that I mentioned with, with the judge's area, though that is the, the most, you know, it's, it's just, you can see it in there, and it just, it makes people wonder, if people walk in and they don't know, hey, that's plaster, moisture can cause that to happen over a period of time, as that moisture is coming through a foundation, people may get nervous and think, what is it, right? So that's, that's why I, I say that area, you know, needs to be addressed right away. You can go through the rest of part of the east side as you move to the north, inside there, you can go in and see, see other areas where, where it's prominent as, as well. Again, some of those areas, they put paneling, they furred out with paneling to kind of hide it. And, and then in the boiler room, especially in the boiler room, you can, you, it's, it's all over there, those walls have never, nothing's ever been done to those in there, and you can see that in there as well. So with our amendment to our, to our last phase, so this is, so we have a, a total price of this to be two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars to alleviate that, and that would take care of the whole exterior, both east side and west side, all the drainage on east side and west side, plus the interior corrections as I, as I talked about for the judge's areas.
So we have this amended agreement before us, we can chew on it. We don't have money just right off the bat that we can drop this on, however, in our discussion, because we're tying it into the sewer system for the city of Marion, that qualifies us to use ARP money. So that is another project that we could target ARP money to get it done, get it behind this, and have things work properly after that. So we will have to take this to the council, they, they have to agree with how we're spending the ARP funds. So how soon do you recommend that we, we try and join, make this change in the amend, with the amendment?
I, I would say, you know, there again, we try to lock people into pricing, and you guys all understand, if you're doing any kind of construction or anything, how, how that is, how sensitive that is right, right now, right? So we've got, we've got about sixty days on, on contractor pricing locked in from when they gave me pricing back around December the tenth, so that, that clock is ticking.
Yes, we're about halfway through that right now.
Right, and so the other thing is that, I mean, we could, the, the way we are looking at trying to schedule this work, I mean, we, we were trying to say, you know, we'll watch the weather come probably into February, early March, if Mother Nature is, is hopefully doing, you know, keeping us, us a little bit warm, or at least mild temperatures and no heavy, heavy freezes and snows, then we could actually begin work a lot sooner. I know the judge is, is anxious to get something going, I don't know if you guys are, are doing some things of cosmetic stuff over there right now, but obviously you're, you're spending some dollars to, to redo later, later on, so I, I think.
So we are definitely on a, on a clock right now.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just, Brad, on page seventeen, there's a, a scheduled numbers there, could you go and go through that a little bit with me? You mentioned the cost, and there's some other numbers that are higher than that, I guess I want to make sure that's tables telling us.
Yeah, so what that is, so that's, that's where we come up with the, you know, if you guys wait to do, do things, kind of, that, that's where we, we show per our Indiana legislation code, is that we are showing you the amortization, if, if this is analyzed, this is where we, we talk about avoided capital costs down the line. So if you guys would wait, you know, with price of money today, what it is, what's going on with inflation, whatever, so if you guys would put this off, it, it would just take longer to.
Okay, so that three point two million, three point nine million, those numbers are future, I mean, those are costly, something's paid for down the road in some period of time.
Right, right, yeah, it's the same type of formula that we've used in the past projects with you guys to show you that, that, that avoided capital.
You know what timeframe, I mean, years, and what interest rate you've used to calculate that?
Um, yeah, if you look on page eighteen, we've, we've got those escalators in there, Jim.
Okay. Okay, twelve years and the other rates there, okay.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm asking for some wisdom here, gentlemen. Is, is this something that we need to go ahead and, and agree to pending the finances? Is it, can we do it that way, or do we need to, to have a green light from council that says we will use the ARP money, then we can sign it?
My first thought would be, and I, I've just seen this today, so I haven't had a chance to really think about it, my first thought would be to get on the agenda for the January nineteenth council meeting, maybe Amararesco's there as well, guy go over this, and maybe in the meantime, we have some conversation with our consultant too, a little bit, the actual person, and make sure we're all on the same page at that. If you'd be meeting while your next meeting would be the.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, so you'd be meeting before the council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then maybe you could, on your, on the meeting of the first one in February, actually make the official statement that, that April, let's do it.
Will our sixty days be expired?
Just below sixty, the tenth would be sixty.
Yeah, you'd just be, be below sixty, yeah, so, I mean.
Yeah. Well, I, we, we definitely have a restricted time, timeline, but.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming that you guys would probably want this pending legal review as well, so.
Oh, so Kyle, we haven't gotten this, this to Kyle? Okay.
We already did, yep.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Okay, okay, okay.
I, I think probably that is a clear course of action that we get on the agenda for this month, talk to the, the council. If you're available, Brad, or somebody can jump in so that we can explain it one more time, and, and then we can use the, the concept of the ARP funds, which, that's helping us through a lot of deep, dark situations right now. We can get it signed and get it in motion.
You mentioned city Marion, does city Marion do you think to approve this process as well?
I don't believe so, I mean.
You're tying into their system or something?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, that would probably be part of our permitting process. We, we were involved, we did have meetings with, with Pat.
Pinkerton.
Pinkerton, thank you. We, we did have meetings with him and, and discussed this layout and kind of designed it, I mean, it was their feedback that actually said, hey, this would be a good area here, this is what's going on, so they had looked at some, some area planning maps for them as well. But, but, yeah, so we, we did meet with them and discuss that. You know, similar to when we were pumping into the inlet, when we did the work over the corrections facility there, again, you know, we just had to have our drawings reviewed by them during that, during that process, make sure we had their blessing, I mean, they kind of got it as like, here's where we, here's where you can dump it to, here's the inlet you can take it to, here's how many gallons per hour you can put into that inlet, so those were things that we, we worked with them in our design, and then we ran everything by them, and if there was any permitting process or approval, we just made sure.
Yeah, you just hate to have this body, the council, prove something, then also there's a glitch getting into.
Yeah, that's why we kind of went to him early, so, yeah, yeah, we kind of, we've had a good working relationship with that.
Yeah, at best, it would be some type of a, a application fee, I, I think, to tie in, because they, they've worked very closely with us, and as you, again, you said, it was their suggestion, so.
Right, right.
Well, gentlemen, with your permission, I will get this on the agenda for the council, and we'll get that to them this, this month for, for direction.
So then you would see, if, if all would go well that, that evening, then it would go back to your next February meeting then for.
Action.
For action, okay.
It's like on the calendar, February the seventh would be the first commissioner's meeting in February, sound right?
And what time is the council meeting on the nineteenth, you said?
Six, six o'clock.
Okay. All right, that'd be great, all right.
And Brad, any other questions for Brad?
All right, thank you.
All righty. Any other new business that you're aware of, gentlemen? This is a public forum, and if you would like to address the board of commissioners, we invite you to step up to the podium, give your name, address, and your concerns or comments. Not seeing anyone in the room that wants to do that, anyone online that needs to make comment to the commissioners. Hearing none?
Yeah, I'd like to just, I guess, discuss a little bit the most recent invoicing we received from Pyramid on the tower projects.
Okay.
They've given us two invoices to consider. One of those is to J and K for the tower equipment that we've got the capital lease through the US Bank. They've got a large amount here to J and K, one million, four fifty-four, three eighty-four, seventy-seven. We don't pay that directly from our funds, it comes from that leasing money.
Leasing, yes.
So I guess what I'd like for you to do is, you to say it's okay for me to go ahead and submit this to US Bank, then make that payment, I've checked, and Pyramid has signed off on it, so assuming that's correct, the equipment must be in place for us to pay for. And being that larger amount, I hate to see them wait any longer for that, because we aren't going to write a check personally, it's going to come from our, from our lease funds.
And what was the exact amount again?
Uh, the amount is one million, four fifty-four, three eighty-four, seventy-seven.
One million, four fifty-four, three eighty-four, and seventy-seven cents.
Yes, that's correct.
We have received a invoice from Pyramid Consulting regarding the J and K tower equipment that has been tested and is ready for us. It is in the amount of one million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents, and we would need a motion to approve the dispersing of that, those funds.
So moved.
Motion Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Mallory, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried.
Appreciate that, I'll get that paperwork sent out. And the other item on there is MPX Solutions and Starlight thirty, we'll do your next meeting to address that, and I assume Justin will probably get that to you for your review. We didn't get this till the thirtieth or thirty-first.
It came in late Thursday afternoon, so.
And I knew you wouldn't have time.
That's the actual tower structure.
Yeah, the one for MPX is for tower materials, yes, for materials, and that, it just, it, this one they're proposing and approving is application number seven, that page for everything on that material list except drainage, so.
Okay.
Just so you know, but you can do that in your next meeting.
We know that all of the tower steel have been constructed and it is ready to be staged. We're still waiting on the crew for the first southeast tower, is that right?
Yes, I just talked to Davidson, we're in the process of getting electric run to that site so we can start the tower direction.
Good. And just so you know, we were using general fund appropriations to pay those costs, we had a couple sources, we had some Carizac money left and actual general fund dollars that we're using. Those appropriations died December thirty-first, and New Year started January one, so I'm okay with us approving that in your next meeting. It will not actually be an additional appropriation to the council, maybe until the February meeting, but, but just letting you know that from a timing standpoint.
Oops, we gotta jump through.
Yeah, we'll, we will ask the council to do an additional, to incorporate the dollars for the tower that we had in the twenty twenty, the twenty twenty-one budget that weren't finished until, no, it'll be twenty twenty-two, so, it'll come later.
All right, anything else? We will meet in two weeks and a day, the holiday is on Monday, and we will meet on January the eighteenth for our next regular session. We are in recess, thank you.